Before I hit the recording button.
We're so excited.
All right, we are now recording.
All right. I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless meeting for October the 12th, 2020. Council was just in executive session for conducting interviews for town attorney. The invocation as well as leading the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Councilmember Tarrell.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture our sense of community. Help us as we make decisions that might affect our neighbors and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the service to our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America, to the Republic.
One nation, under God.
All right. Let's start with some announcements. For those of you who have not been on the McCandless and Me site, you are really missing a treat. We are getting a lot of interest. We have had over 1,000 visits on the site already, and 400 of those have been related, have been chicken activities. 11 sites have been penned by citizens who are interested in having chickens, and 27 surveys have been filled out. So it is generating some interest. Also be looking forward to a similar area to be put up about the deer management program, which we're starting to work on. So check out McCandless and Me. I want to remind council and anyone who's watching this that we will be going over the budget October the 26th. The next three meetings, November 9th and November 23rd. Also roadside cleanup is October 17th. We are doing small groups. Please sign up on the town website if you're interested in helping do some roadside cleanup. Knit Hope is still collecting in the front foyer of the town hall until the end of the month for crocheted and knitted hats and scarves to give away to the needy. They have had an overwhelming response from the generosity of the town. So thank everyone for that. One more thing, the scavenger hunt to test your McCandless knowledge. So you think you know McCandless. You can put your knowledge to the test. Go down to the town. You can pick up a packet for $15 for your family, and you have the rest of the month to follow the, to find the answers. And every group that returns an answer sheet reserves a heritage pin, and every group that gets at least eight questions correct, you get entered a second time. And if you get all 10 questions, you get entered a third time for a possible prize basket. So test your knowledge about our town. And the Heritage Center, that is a fundraiser and an activity from our Heritage Center. If there are any seminars or the ALOM seminar, if anyone or council is interested in attending that, please talk to Marie, and she does a group registration for us. So if anyone, it's virtual. If anyone is interested, please contact her. Any other announcements that I missed? Okay. All right. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
No, moved.
That's Trish?
Yes.
Okay. And those are the minutes for September 14th and the reconvene minutes for September 28th. I had a change that I submitted for the minute, the motion for the minutes were incorrect. I think I sent that to you, Bob, so that the-
The minutes have been corrected accordingly.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Perfect. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other changes that anyone else noted that, or any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving minutes, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. This is the time for public comment. So anyone that would like to make a public comment, and this can be about anything, please put your name in the box and say that you want to speak, and RJ will turn you on. So RJ, do we have any public comment?
At this point, I don't. We'll see if anything pops up, but most of the early meeting audience were folks that are here for the library, I believe.
Okay. Okay. All right. Then let's go to the reports of committees. Finance and Personnel. Councilmember Tarrell.
Yep. We have Tarrell. Yeah, we have a couple things tonight. First is, we need to review the checklist number nine dated September 1st through the 30th. Building a little over $1.1 million is submitted to each member of council in their packet and posted on the board and town website. Does anybody have-
Are there any questions? Any questions about that? Tricia's here, I'm sure, if there are any questions.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Okay. All right. Hearing none?
The second agenda item is to review the monthly financial summary and dashboard report that was included in our packets.
I have included the year-to-date September 30th, 2020 dashboard and summary report in tonight's packet. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them now. Of course, you'll be getting further updates this week with the 2021 budget.
I'm happy to say that the budget amendment that council passed in June has accounted for the expected shortfalls of revenue due to the COVID shutdown, and special thanks to Public Works and Public Safety for really keeping a tight hand on their budgets. So that was, that was well done. So thank you. Next?
The next item on the agenda is to review the 2021 Northland Public Library Authority Board of Trustees' proposed budget.
All right. I've got a couple different people to queue up here. So as I work through them, just give me a moment. As soon as Irene is on, I think you got everyone. Oh, and Casey, but I sent her a microphone request. Or him. Not sure which. I guess Casey could be either. Her. All right. I got it.
Done, RJ.
All right. Take it away, folks.
Well, I don't know if you want me to start, but I do want to start by just thanking you all for having the opportunity to come and answer any questions you may have. I know we did submit some responses to questions that were posed to us before the meeting, and we'll be happy to answer any questions or clarifications on that. With me tonight, I have Bob Lukic, who is our Director of Finance and Support Services, Casey Sample, who is our Authority Board President, and Irene Caliendo and Dana Getz, who are your McCandless representatives on our Authority Board as well.
We have had this submitted to us and had some questions. Does anyone have any further questions or anything they would like to bring up?
I have one or two.
Are you okay with taking this now, Amy?
Sure. You know, if it's something a little bit more in depth, you know, I reserve the right to get that information to you, you know, tomorrow, but we'll do what we can. Happy to hear the questions.
Understood. So, Amy, I'm new to this. I've only been on council for a couple months, and this is my first year through this process. So if I ask something dumb, just guide me the right direction. So I was looking at your requested budget versus last year, and you made reductions in the county, state, and gaming funding. How did you come up with those numbers? Is that something you know already?
No, we do not know, and that was one of the big challenges we had this year. At this point, for the state funding, the state has only, they've passed a bifurcated budget, so they've only approved five twelfths of our funding for next year. So, and that's all that they are likely to do before the election. We really don't know when they will consider the seven twelfths. It will be sometime after the election, but we have no idea when we will hear that number, and we don't really have much indication what it might be. It's based on, you know, the funding and the revenue shortfalls that the state experiences. On the table gaming, that is kind of based on some projections on what we have received so far this year, much like some of your tax revenue. Those revenues, we receive a quarter behind when they are collected. So we know there will probably be some shortfall heading into next year. Again, that just depends on social distancing and how long, you know, when the casinos are able to remain open and that kind of thing. So we're, it's our best guess projection based on what we've, you know, received so far year-to-date. And on the county RAD funding, they do not release their final budget for next year until early December, usually. We do have some ideas from them this year. They had announced, I think it was back in the late spring, to expect a 20% reduction for this year's funding from them. And so we're not sure where they're going to go next year. Hopefully, it won't be that dire. But the other thing that complicates the RAD funding for 2021 is that this year, the RAD has imposed a formula change. All of the libraries in Allegheny County share a pot of money based on a many-factor formula, and the RAD Board has requested and asked that more of those funds be shifted and directed to libraries that are serving distressed communities. So that funding formula was changed this year. Next year will be the first year that goes into effect. And unfortunately, when you're talking a zero-sum game or a reduced-sum game, that means we will be, you know, feeling a big pinch from that funding change as well. So there's sort of a two-pronged reduction coming at us for that. So again, we won't know those numbers for sure. You know, we're making our best guess. We're trying to be very conservative with those guesses because it's always easier to add additional revenues in than it is to continue to make more and more cuts. So that's how we arrived at those numbers.
Okay.
Did I catch them all?
You did. My second question is, all of them were deeply discounted except the local municipal funding one. So that one stayed the same. So, you know, we had McCandless, and I'm sure of our neighboring communities, had to cut significant money out of our budget. Can you talk to why that revenue line item stayed the same?
Sure. In the past, oh, I don't know, about six or seven years, we've been averaging about a 3% increase from the total municipal funding that then goes through our local formula. And normally, that's kind of where, what our target has been this year. We knew that there, and recognized that there would be challenges faced by our municipalities. And when we started our budget process, which we have to begin in June so that we can have it completed and sent to all of the municipalities in time for your budget process, we sort of flipped the tables this year. Normally, our finance committee meets, and then our board approves the budget, and then we will have a meeting with the municipal managers. And this year, we recognized there might be some challenges there. So we met with all of the managers at the very beginning of our process, which again was in June. And everybody pretty much was on board that this was not a good year for us to be asking for any kind of increase, and we understood that. That's why we were asking the questions at that point in time. And at that point, all of the managers seemed to feel that flat funding for the library was something that would be doable across the municipalities. Now, they also couched that and said, you know, they're pending, you know, further cuts or, you know, anything that might come further along, you know, because that was so early in the process. And they also deferred to, to all of them, their answers were almost identical, and they also said, but we don't speak for our boards as well. So, you know, they were giving us some guidance on that, and so that's why we did move forward with that at that point.
Okay. I only have two other questions. So on your, so your revenues are budgeted at about 10% less than last year, but your expenditures remain the same. Was there an attempt to get those more in line with the revenue reduction, or why is it at that sort of same number?
Well, in order to remain even with our expenditures, there were a number of areas that did need to be cut because there were some categories that we don't have as much control over that we're increasing, including a lot of our cleaning and disinfecting costs in order to be able to remain open through the pandemic. There are some other costs, insurance costs and things like that, both healthcare for the employees as well as insurance costs for the building. And so there were a number of items that we couldn't control. So we had to make cuts in other areas to cover those increases. The other reason was we were pretty aggressive in going out there to get a PPP loan to cover eight weeks of our salaries and benefits. And so we knew that would result in some savings, and we worked hard to have it, to reduce our expenditures this year as well, as much as we could to be able to have enough funding that we could transfer into our existing operating reserve and be able to draw those funds out to cover that gap for next year. So since we felt we had those additional funds, that was a way that we felt we could maintain our services as best we could to the residents that we serve.
Okay. And my last question is about the PPP loan. So it looks like you're gonna, the library's gonna end the year with $691,000 in excess, and you'll transfer, you'll basically, I don't use the term windfall, but you'll have over a million dollars, over half a million dollars that you can use in 2021. Like, what's that going to do to the budget? How are you going to use that significant amount of excess money next year?
When we responded, we included some documentation in Exhibit Number One. $125,000 of that is going to be used to cover the 2020 depreciation costs that we have, and those have, are increasing significantly because we had two major construction projects that we completed this year. We replaced our entire HVAC system, and we replaced our roof. And since you are, you know, newer to the council, we were able to do that. We brought in over $700,000 in outside grant money to help with those projects. And so some of this is repaying into our capital accounts for some of those grant monies that came in and to cover this year's depreciation costs. We are also planning to use a portion of that to cover next year's depreciation costs as well. And then there are most of the remainder to fill that operating budget gap.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you, Amy.
Were there any other questions from council?
I do.
Okay.
Amy, thank you. And I just want to say upfront that I think that our Northland Library is a fabulous asset to our community. So I might ask a hard question, but I want you to know that I completely support what you and your team do, and it's a very important thing for us and the surrounding communities. But I have to ask, coming from a business background, I understand the flat budget concept that you said you have, but I also have to ask, when revenues reduce, in fact, your revenues, I think, are estimated to reduce to, as I recall, maybe between, somewhere between 2016 and 2017 levels. Typically, what, one of the things you would look at is, and you did, you reduced other costs. However, I wanted to ask you what things, but there's also hard decisions to make in those things. So I'd like to ask you, what has the library decided to stop doing or do dramatically differently, and how much consideration and thought? It's a hard, hard thing, but usually when revenues go down, so does staffing. And while I appreciate you did give us information about best-in-class in terms of number of employees, that those are just hard realities of like budgeting. So those are my questions.
And they're good questions. They, there are some very difficult considerations there. One of the things that makes it difficult for libraries is we're already running a fairly lean staffing scenario compared to the services that we provide. And I know some of what you're asking is, well, sometimes you've got to make those hard cuts and cut some of those services. And probably, you know, if push came to shove and things were even worse than what we're projecting, it would probably come out of our collection funding to a degree as well as our programming. One of the things that is another prong to this is we have to meet state standards in order to remain eligible for not only our state funding that we receive, but the RAD and through the Allegheny County Library Association, they've adopted the state standards as well. So RAD looks to libraries to meet those state standards. And those standards include things like a library our size based on our population served. We must be open a total of 65 hours per week and at least seven hours on the weekend. So we have to cover those public service hours in order to meet those standards. So when you start talking about reducing staff, if we can't reduce those hours, it just continues to stretch staff thinner and thinner across those lines. So that's one of the reasons why we're hesitant to go that direction if we need to. We do currently have some vacant positions, and if we needed to, we would, you know, continue to leave some positions vacant. We would look at some, you know, other ways to reduce some of those staffing hours. We did just reduce one of our positions from a full-time position down to a part-time position. We already have a number, as you saw in the answers there, that most of our staffing is part-time already at this point. And some of that is by design because when we have to cover so many hours, it's easier to account for vacation and medical leave if we have more people to rotate in through those spots. So that helps us as well for our scheduling. And the other, another state standard that we have to pay close attention to is that collection spending. We're required by the state to spend at least 12% of our operating budget on our collection. So we can't just cut the collection in and of itself, but as we reduce some of those other expenditures, then we can correspondingly reduce the collection expenditure. So we're always keeping an eye on that, and that actually goes not for our budget, but what we actually spend at the end of the year. So even if we were to get in some donations to add to our spending, we still have to make sure that our collection spending meets that 12%. So it's always a bit of a tricky thing, and we always try and budget a little bit above that 12% so that we have a little bit of leeway for unexpected expenses. We often also, you know, I hate to say it, but we do take it out on the staff with reduced, you know, we're looking at changing benefits and changing our healthcare. We would probably reduce a lot of our staff development going into next year, those costs. And again, some of that staff development is mandated by the state. Every staff member that works over, I believe it's 13 hours, is required to complete six CE credits, continuing education credits every two years. So, you know, again, we have to be careful and watch all of those requirements. So it is, it's quite a challenge. So it wouldn't be any one thing. We would take a little bit from a lot of different places and put off some, you know, unfortunately, facilities, repairs, and maintenance. We've been slowly replacing some of the carpeting in the building that would be put on hold. We've been reupholstering some of the furniture that would be put on hold. You know, some other equipment, things like that, we would put off for another year.
All right, Amy. Thank you. That's been very informative. I appreciate it.
Any other, any other questions from council?
I didn't know if any of our board members wanted to add anything that I might have missed.
Well, not so much missed, Amy, but the first is, we do appreciate not only the opportunity to explain in more detail what's going on with the library and its budgeting process and all the programs, but we also appreciate the situation that the town council is in, and that you are facing the same things that everyone else in the country is facing, and that you're just doing diligence. So we do understand that, and we appreciate it, and we hope that you can see that the library staff really has done the same. The first, I just want to make sure that people realize that if we don't maintain the state standards, it's not just that we're not maintaining the state standards, that impacts other funding and revenue streams. And so that, that's really important, that that not backslide. But I also want to make sure that you understand that, and you probably do, but just to put a face on it, understand that none of this was done lightly or with any expectation of deserving or the library should get attitude. First of all, as several of you have mentioned, the library is part of the lifeblood of the culture of the North Hills, and they do a fantastic job. And I think in times like these, when people are feeling personal strains in their budget and in their mental health and in their own personal space, because they're all on top of each other, because it's limited where they can go these days, that the library is more essential than ever. And I think more than just keeping the doors opened, I hope you think about all of those downstream benefits that the library gives you. It gives you a better educated citizen. It gives you a student body that has the ability to do better in school and therefore, hopefully, by extension in later life. You know, it gives you, you know, better mental health in terms of a community. And I'd like you to think about that. But also, throughout the whole process, I think Councilwoman First Powers, then Councilwoman Woods, and then, and most, more recently, Councilman Smith, when attended the Authority Board meetings, really appreciated the due diligence that everyone was doing. I mean, the staff came totally prepared. The board did not rubber stamp the budget. The board had questions, much like your questions, and much like most of you, this is my first budgeting process as well with the library. So I just wanted to say that and put it into focus and hope you think about all of those things when you're ultimately making the decision.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? All right. Thank you all. We appreciate your comments and coming tonight to answer our questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike?
Moving on, the next item on the agenda is to move to adopt Resolution 18 of the 2020- of the 2020 series, a resolution to amend Resolution 16 of the 2019 by naming current signatories authorized to sign documents relative to the town's defined benefit pension plans.
And this is just a housekeeping item. Council, we do it every year. Council has to adopt who can possibly sign for a transfer of money. So this is just a housekeeping item. Do you say that in the form of a motion, please? I move.
I can. I move to adopt Resolution number 18 of the 2020 series, a resolution to amend Resolution number 16 of 2019 by naming current signatories authorized to sign documents relative to the town of McCandless defined benefit pension plans.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Is there any questions about this? Just housekeeping. Okay. All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I'll just continue. Make a motion to move to approve Resolution 19 of the 2020 series, a resolution setting dates of various meetings of town council and town boards, commissions and authorities for the 2021 calendar year.
Second. Was that Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. One thing I did notice, RJ, didn't planning want to meet at 7:00 and 7:30?
You're one step ahead of me. I jumped on here to say, I think just because we're so used to having it say 7:30 every year, we did not switch it. The planning commission did vote to start meeting at 7 o'clock.
Okay. Is there any problem, any objection to that? Okay. All right. Then we can have that changed to 7 o'clock. Is there anything else?
I had a question. Is there a formal policy or decision on when we might return to meeting in person? Or that says, is a lot, is, as we move along and we sort of just take temperature of what's going on?
We can put that on as an agenda item to talk about that again. Had we decided to go to the end of the year before? Did we decide?
No, I think we had decided, I'll be honest. I can't remember whether we decided through September or October. At this point in time, even with the updated restrictions or the relaxing of restrictions that the state announced last week, we did the calculation on the capacity of the assembly room and we can now move from 25 people to 26 people in the room. Not a great deal of difference. We, we could discuss more of a hybrid situation. If you wanted some in the room, some not in the room, that gets, that gets complicated. Or we can continue what we're doing.
We do have a motion on the floor now for, for the
For the resolution.
Approving this calendar. So let's, let's deal with that resolution. If, if, we do need to talk about it, we can put it on the, this agenda is so packed. What do you say? We put it on next time's agenda and then we, we decide then? Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Unless everybody just knows what they want right now, but. Okay. All right. All right. There's been a motion and there's a second. Is there any other changes? Did we, are we meeting on any holidays or made any mistakes like that that anybody sees?
No, we
Sorry, go ahead, Bob.
No, go ahead, Dave.
I was gonna say, the only thing I'd point out is the Heritage Center is keeping their meetings at 4:30, which just might be hard for somebody from council to, to attend those regularly. I've, I've been able to attend them pretty regularly so far. I think I've made every one. But the 4:30, just pointing it out for, for future reference. I mean, I don't have any objection to it staying at 4:30. Just something we might want to take a look at at some point.
Okay.
Because I anticipate there will be a couple that I'm gonna have to miss just because of work schedule.
Any other comments about the schedule? And Dave, if you don't mind, at your next meeting, will you bring that up to them and see if they would like to change that time? And then we can at least amend this so it can get on the calendar? Because everybody lives by that calendar.
Yeah.
Okay? Would that be the proper way, Bob, to do that?
Yes, that's, that's good.
Okay.
All right. Just, yeah, and just, just, we can bring it up at the next meeting if they decide to make it a little later. I think that's a bad time too, but the group at the time decided that. So if there's no more comments, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Next item is I move to adopt Resolution number 20 of the 2020 series, a resolution supporting Women Impacting Public Policy and the Small Business Saturday Coalition to proclaim a Small Business Saturday on November 28th, 2020.
Second. Okay. I know that we have a lot going on, but I have to tell you that I think this resolution is so important. Do you, Councilmember Tarrell, do you have that resolution in front of you?
I do not.
Okay. Does, does
I have it pulled up.
I do.
Okay. Would someone mind reading that resolution? I, it's just, I think it's just so good. I really do would like to have it read. Thank you.
Do you want me to read it or did someone else want to?
Whoever, Shelley, that's fine.
All right. The entire thing. Yes, Madam President?
Yeah.
"A resolution supporting the Small Business Saturday Coalition to proclaim a Small Business Saturday on Saturday, November 28th, 2020. A national effort to encourage consumers to shop at local independently owned businesses and recognize the contributions they make to our local economy. Whereas the Town of McCandless, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, celebrates our local small business, businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas the Town of McCandless supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas small businesses employ nearly half of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas more than 40% of the businesses in 2020 were closed temporarily or otherwise due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas these closures cause 40% drop in unemployment. And whereas more than 90% of consumers in the United States have small businesses in their community that they would miss if the small businesses closed. Whereas 59% of small business owners said that Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the Town of, Town Council of Town of McCandless do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across our country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year."
Thank you. I think, I think that's one of the most beautiful resolutions that has been written since I've been on council. And I appreciate you reading that. All right. All those in favor?
Madam President, I just wanted to give a shout out then to John Bajarski, who, who wrote that.
Our best writer, our chief writer.
Madam President, quick comment. I, I love the resolution. And the only thing I'd throw out there for future consideration is whether we'd want to extend it to a whole weekend or a whole week. Not now, this is already done and, and written and I love it. But just for future consideration, making a Small Business Week. I know Small Business Saturday is a kind of an official thing, but you could make a Small Business Week an official McCandless thing. Just throwing it out there.
I'd like to also thank, just go with what Councilman Smith said. We can, as residents of McCandless, we do have a website that Mr. Bajarski worked on to highlight our small businesses. I encourage our residents to take a look at that. And if you are a small business owner in our community, please let us know about your business. We want to support you and we want to make the information available to other residents as well.
Thank you, Trish. I was gonna say the exact same thing. It's called the Small Business Bulletin Board and you can find that on the town website. All right. Let's vote. All those in favor of adopting this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. The zoning committee. The, everyone received the zoning report that RJ put in our, in our, our pack, our folder. If you have any questions about that, we can certainly take those. Do you have any questions? Review the public hearing comments on the proposed ordinance establishing regulations pertaining to the keeping of chickens. RJ, you got a short summary of, short summary of this?
Yes, so we just received one actual public hearing comment by a resident that has been pretty helpful actually in giving input on the McCandless and Me website on the chicken subject as well. I believe her primary comments were that she wanted to see the setback reduced because the 100-foot setback that was originally being discussed was going to be exclusionary to quite a few of the lots, the residential lots in town. Had some feedback on the coop as well. Just, you know, some, some general comments on the materials, whether they had to be perfectly uniform, the same color, you know, just kind of different things like that. We have gotten quite a bit of feedback on the McCandless and Me website, but I'm not sure if that's what the town manager was intending for us to go over now. So Bob, how far do you want me to take it?
Well, as far as a council would like you to take it this evening.
Okay.
I, I think we were, we were there, so. Is there any comments or anything that anyone in council?
As to the ordinance itself?
Wants to make, the, the one thing that
Uh oh.
Oh, no.
Am I locked out or is Kim?
No.
Kim is.
Kim, if you can hear us, you're frozen. But you probably cannot hear us.
I'll text her.
Oh wait, Kim, you're back.
Aha, all right.
I don't know what happened.
It was me threatening to text you that got your computer to behave.
Okay. Did I miss anything?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. The, the only, the only thing that I saw in there, because there were some, you know, changes. So what we got was the changes based on council input and, and on the, and public comment was when we, we took out the taking of the chickens and we talked about the nuisance. But we, do we need to, and this would be, I guess, for Solicitor Rob, would this be for, do we need to make a reference for that, a reference that cross references that this would be handled on our nuisance ordinance? The keeping of household pets so that
No. No, I mean, I think, I think that's in the appropriate place. I don't think we need to, you know, when we're in the zoning, it really has its own sort of enforcement procedures and penalties and things like that. So I think that would just muddy the waters. I mean, we certainly want to make sure we're cognizant of that. And again, we talked about how the fact that, you know, this issue came up in the, in the situation with the dogs. But, you know, it, it would apply for chickens as well. Things like odors and nuisance, nuisance effects on neighbors. So I think we're okay without cross reference.
I just didn't know if we had to say it again. Seems like we repeat ourselves a lot in ordinances.
Madam President, I had a couple things on the ordinance.
That you want to change?
Yeah, there was, there were certain things, well, a couple things added. And then I'll loop back to the setbacks in a minute. On page four, under section two of whatever section number it's in, the bullet point at 10, at 10, the relates to vaccinating the chickens. My understanding is those two conditions only affect chickens. They're not anything that could affect humans. So I don't know if that's really needed for this. You know, the sick or injured part, but then the, the part that's been added with respect to the vaccinations.
I think we were going, didn't we decide we were gonna stick with what the Penn State Extension decided to, said we should do with chickens? Was that what we decided?
That was my takeaway, which is why, you know, there's a couple of references in that annotated version that council's seen that does cite to those, that specific study from Penn State, just as backup. Because as we all discussed last time, you know, I don't know whether it's a good, good idea about vaccinate chickens or not, but that seems to be the recommendation, even if it is chicken on chicken infection that we're dealing with.
Okay. You know, it's not a huge deal to me. It's just I, you know, it, it, when I looked those up, it only seems to affect chickens and not humans in any way. And then the, I, I had one other comment, but, but I also had a question under the same section, the first bullet point for hobby farms. Is this the only place in any of our ordinance that the term hobby farm is used or is it used elsewhere?
This is the only place it is.
Okay, so is that gonna create any confusion that, you know, hobby farms? I mean, we define it here, but it, that it appears nowhere else? You know, I, I just, I guess I don't understand why we're all of a sudden referencing hobby farms when, when it, when it's nowhere else in our ordinances.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not against broader regulations that would cover hobby farms, but I think for this particular purpose, I think this may recognize that there's situations at existing properties where there are chicken, there is chicken keeping occurring. And, you know, maybe it's, it has not been lawful to this point because technically, and RJ can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is technically chickens are only permitted on quote unquote farms as our zoning ordinance defines that term.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I guess the, the limited purpose this would be, and again, I'm not suggesting this is a comprehensive, you know, set of regulations for hobby farms, but it essentially sort of acknowledges that that activity may have been occurring and as long as it's in compliance with the remainder of the ordinance, I think it's sort of a, well, you can keep doing it as long as you're in compliance.
I, I guess, you know, what I'm wondering is, and, and I have no problem with that. I mean, I'm, I'm a big proponent of less regulation than more. The only question that I have is, does that create a loophole that swallows the rule? I mean, so can somebody just have chickens and say, no, I'm a hobby farm? If it's not defined anywhere else, is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, we could certainly slide that hobby farm definition into the full set of definitions. But again, without regulations surrounding that, you know, I'm not sure if that is gonna be enough to clarify what, what can and can't happen on hobby farms. So I think, again, we, this is sort of a, you know, kind of a limited purpose definition, which is why it's set up the way it is. But again, no problem, if, if your, if council is interested in more broader regulation of this particular use of property, you know, we could certainly look into that. look into that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's more maybe just putting it somewhere else in the definitions of our ordinances, so that this isn't the only place that it ever pops up, wherever that...
I can just jump in and speak a little bit to sort of the formatting issue here, because I think that's kind of what we're running into with the definitions, is, you know, how does this whole thing work together, right? There are some other instances that you would define a term maybe specific to that ordinance, for example, or I should say to that section of the zoning ordinance. One example would be the oil and gas ordinance. Gavin, correct me if I'm wrong, that whole big list of terms that we've got in there, that's, I'm trying to catch this on camera, but those are part of that section, is that correct, or are we adding that to the preliminary provisions?
My recollection is those are specific, and that's the way we did the original ordinance back in 2010, so maybe a carryover from...
And I mean, I've seen that done before, when there are terms that are really specific to whatever topic you're talking about in that section, you'll just put them right there, because the average user actually might not flip to where the definition section is before they look at the piece of code that's regulating exactly what they're trying to do. So I would say if this was something that was being used throughout the ordinance, or if it was something on the use chart, something that would pop up in other districts for reasons other than chickens, it would make sense. I mean, I'm not opposed to putting it in the main definition section, but, you know, just sort of...
Yeah, well, and RJ, I think that's where, you know, that's where my eyebrow was raised, is because right now, so right now, the term hobby farms is only used in connection with chickens?
Mm-hmm.
And so what stops somebody who otherwise would not qualify for a chicken coop from just putting up a chicken coop and saying they're a hobby farm?
So the way that, from the zoning officer perspective, I would interpret that is if you had a large enough tract of land that you could be a conditional use farm, but let's say you're just doing it for your own edification or benefit, you're not actually making a living off of the farm activities that you've had there. I mean, really, you shouldn't have horses or other livestock, because again, that's prevented from anywhere that is not already considered a conditional use farm. But that particular conditional use regulation does have a lot of stipulations about, like, heavy agricultural activity, that maybe someone would look at that and go, well, I'm not all of that stuff, you know, I just farm for my own benefit. I think it's a term that was in there because the example regulations that we sort of constructed this off of, used it, so it seemed like a thing to keep in there for consistency, but I don't feel too strongly about it either way if we think it's causing confusion.
Okay, and it only applies to currently existing?
Yes.
Uses, right? Okay, so, I mean, I guess that would take care of most of the problems I could see with it.
I would still make him get a permit.
What's that?
Is that I would still make him get a permit? That would not hold weight.
And then the last, so the last one is with respect to the setbacks, and I know we lowered it from 100 to 50, but in looking at it, my understanding is that there are a lot of properties in McCandless that are either 75 feet wide or 100 feet wide, that a 50-foot setback would just completely eliminate them from getting it without having to apply for a variance. And so I think us as a council, I don't think that's something we should be punting to the zoning board to hear variances on. I would rather, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but my understanding is it would be well more than, well more than 50% of the lots in McCandless are less than 100 feet wide, and I'd rather not pass an ordinance than pass one that only applies to a minority of property. That's my position, I just wanted to get that out there. I'm happy to discuss it with anyone if they want.
And I do want to mention, with the zoning hearing board, it would probably be a very difficult bar to prove that there is hardship, that you cannot use a lot in any other way if you don't have a chicken coop on it.
Right.
So that will probably not be a useful venue for someone who doesn't fit.
Yeah, yeah, right, so, you know, and that just underscores the fact that this is an ordinance that would only benefit a small percentage of people compared to the, you know, to the number of residents as a whole. You know, I'm not opposed to other, to working at different ways, having different setbacks for a backlot versus sidelots, or however the case might be, but to me, I just, you know, an ordinance that has a setback that eliminates a good number of, a good number of the properties in McCandless, I just don't, you know, I wouldn't agree with that.
I completely agree with you, David, 100% everything you've said tonight. I honestly don't know why, what's the point of what we're doing if, let's say, 95% of the town is not going to be able to, their lots are not big enough for this, it just doesn't make sense.
The feedback that I'm getting from people, and I've sent a few of these around to you all, emails that I've gotten, is that people, the people that I'm hearing from are saying they don't want chickens, and they don't want chickens, and they don't want chickens close to their lot. If their neighbor wants chickens, they can have them, but they don't want them close to their property. They don't want to hear them, they don't want to see them, and that they liked the 50-foot setback.
And I understand that. My position on it is, you know, again, I go back to, I am in favor of less regulation versus more. And, you know, we're talking about people's private property, and, you know, setbacks for various things are perfectly allowable, and, you know, I have no problem with people liking those setbacks or agreeing with them. That's just kind of my position on the matter, that if it's, I look at it from the point of view of, if we're going to pass an ordinance, it shouldn't be something that's only going to benefit, you know, the biggest 10% of the lots in McCandless, or whatever that number is.
That's 10% more than can have it right now.
I, yep, I get that, but, you know, and I do understand that, but to me, I don't think there, that's not something that I can really get behind, I guess, is what I'm saying.
So Gavin, so do we just take an informal nod of what we want this to be among council, and then council, the majority decides what this setback should be, and then when it comes down, time to vote for it, people can vote against it, or they can vote for it? How do we, what do we do about a sticking point of an ordinance?
Yeah, and because this is such a fundamental sticking point, I do think you want to just get count to four votes in order to have us make whatever change, whether it stays at 50, or we, you know, it's reduced in some way, so that we know how to finalize the ordinance, because as I think we mentioned last time, we are going to have to go back through the process, have a second public hearing, and, you know, basically take a second run exactly as we did this time prior to passing it. But I think, to your point, going around and saying, you know, what's the number you'll support, you at least know that that particular issue, not that you can't change your vote ultimately, but as of right now, we need direction as to how to finalize this ordinance.
Right, and that's why I bring it up now, is because I know I wouldn't support it, and I don't want it going through another round if we can avoid that by talking about it now. And it might already be, there might already be the support for it in its current form, I'm just laying out my thoughts on it.
Okay, so I'm understanding, you say Gavin, that I go around and everyone says 25 or 50, is that what, is that our choices? David, is that what you're saying, 25? You didn't give us a number, you said you didn't like 50, you didn't give us a number.
Yeah, I mean, you know, knowing that there's lots that go down to 75 feet, I mean, I'd even be okay, again, RJ, you might have to inform me if you have any knowledge of this, you know, how many, what percentage of lots do you think it would eliminate if it was 50 foot from the backlot line? Not the side lot lines, but the back...
I am not confident in a number, but I will say that R1 and R2, definitely R2, I guess I should fact-check myself on R1, but I'm pretty sure they both have a 40-foot minimum rear yard setback, so there's no guarantee that lots would necessarily be built with greater than a 40-foot rear yard.
Okay, I mean, between that and then the width of the lots, you know, 30 feet, 32 and a half feet, basically the biggest amount, you know, I'm trying to, I would go up to 35, but then that gets to 70, and that only leaves five feet from the side...
32.5.
There's something that I wanted to throw out there, because Gavin and I were having a conversation about sort of the concept of setback from another structure versus setback from the property line, and I do also want to mention, we're getting some really interesting feedback on the McCandless and Me website about that too. But Gavin, if you want to maybe just talk a little bit about kind of the setback math that we were working on?
Right, so we, you know, we understand that there, you know, it would be nice to have these setbacks set up in some sense from another dwelling on another property, but I think that creates quite a few complications, and it almost dictates what you can do with your property based on how your neighbor has, you know, constructed a dwelling on their property, or it basically things outside your control, not only that, but it's difficult from an enforcement standpoint, to the extent, you know, we're requiring surveys to prove that you're, the appropriate distance from whatever the setback is, and, you know, having to run surveys across a neighbor's property and get permission and, you know, sort of line all that up seems overly burdensome for this particular use. So we had talked about, you know, maybe council taking into account the existing setbacks that are already essentially protected as, you know, front, rear, side, whatever, not front here, but, you know, rear and side setbacks, and then sort of acknowledging the fact that, look, if there's a 15-foot setback already at the property line on both sides, you essentially have a 30-foot, you know, gap right there, and so going, you know, from your, essentially the idea is to kind of take into account the neighboring setbacks around you when you're setting your setback line, because knowing that you're going to get an additional setback from your neighbor's rear yard, side yard, whatever it might be, and, you know, that might be a way for council, and again, I don't have an opinion as to whether or not you should reduce them or should maintain them as to where they are, but that might be another sort of conceptual way to look at it, is, all right, do we do 25 or 35 feet knowing that there's a 15-foot setback already in existence there, which means that there's going to be at least 50 feet between the coop and, you know, where anything could be built on that neighboring property?
Yeah, I think the minimum, at least that you see now is, and it's been this way for several decades actually, but for one-story homes in R2, they have to, which is what the vast majority of our residential zoning districts fall under, it has to be at least 10 feet from the property line, so reasonably you can assume the shortest sort of generally conforming side setback that anyone would have is 10 feet. So maybe from, you know, a side lot line, abutting a side lot line, if you want to keep 50 feet from a structure, it would be more appropriate to set it at 40, or you could do 35, or, you know, whatever combination, same thing for rear yards. I've seen a few that have been 30, that are older housing stock, I think unless a lot is severely non-conforming, it's uncommon to get less than a 30-foot rear yard. So again, you know, you could do sort of that funky setback math, and set it, you know, from a rear lot line, you have to be this far away, unless you're abutting your neighbor's side lot line, which happens sometimes.
That's my house.
Yeah, exactly, I was just looking at another zoning issue with something like that, you know, so I mean, it could, I think it's, if we're looking at setbacks that respect structures on other property, it's best to sort of self-contain the math on your own lot, you know, instead of trying to cross property lines. Also, just sort of a general comment about the feedback that we have been getting on our engagement website, we've been running that for a couple weeks now, we launched it at the public hearing, maybe, you know, before sending things off to the county, just in case there's any sort of feedback that would come out of that site that might influence the way that council feels about any of the topics we've been discussing, we could come back, maybe at next meeting, I could put together a nice report for everyone to take a look at sort of what we've been getting, and then maybe sort of take that into account with the whole picture of how you might want to amend the ordinance before we send the draft after the county. Just throwing it out there.
I think that, I think that sounds like a good idea.
I think that's very generous, RJ, but we can just go there and read it ourselves, there's no reason for you to have to put that together for us.
Well, the survey results are not public, so I guess that's the one thing...
Oh, I thought you were talking about the comments.
No, no, yeah, so the comments, I think we have seven or eight of those, and you can see the coop pictures as well, I think.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, but the surveys, those are all on the analytic side, and pulling the map pins as well, we could maybe get a sense of what the lot sizes are.
Okay.
And just to, you know, just to let everyone know...
Excuse me, David. Angela?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments real quickly. At our previous meeting, I had raised a concern about the proximity of a coop to your own house, and whether we should maintain a 25 to 50-foot setback. I was actually able to reach out to the author of the Raising Fowl in Urban Areas at Penn State, and he said that that was, it was poorly written, it was more of a concern of keeping that distance between the coop and somebody else's house, so if somebody wanted to have the coop right outside their kitchen window, that there'd be no issue now, so I just wanted to make that clear. Another concern I had was about the, Councilman Smith mentioned about the vaccinations, and this is just a question for Mr. Rob, I don't know, because we could find out, but is that applying to chickens in like a large facility where you would have hundreds of chickens? They might be treated differently than when you had six chickens in your backyard.
Certainly, we could look into that. I don't know if that's more of a factory farm type, you know, precaution, or if it is more of a hobby farm, if you will, precaution, or, you know, just a local municipality, so we could check into that and get back to you.
All right, well, to the end, this gentleman...
Go ahead, finish, please, Angela.
The gentleman at Penn State, Philip Clower is his name, he's a professor in the poultry sciences division, and he helps communities with these types of ordinances all the time. If it would be all right with council, I'd be happy to send this to him and let him have a look over it and see if he had any comments or suggestions before we went any further.
Counsel, do we have enough information, or do we want to have another person look at it? Did you freeze, or am I, are you frozen?
We're all here.
Angela, it looks like we think we have enough, looks like we have enough information. Thank you. Okay, who else had a comment?
I just, this is just informational, I don't know the answer to, well, first of all, yeah, I know, kind of, talking to two, I talked to two veterinarians, one that wasn't included in the, wasn't in the document, is, which I think was one of my concerns, you know, I'm just reading stuff, is that there is a salmonella vaccine, and that was not mentioned, but I think that was the thing that I was most concerned about, is eggs having salmonella, and eggs being given to neighbors, and, you know, residents, and so on, but both veterinarians that I talked to agreed that, now they're veterinarians, I understand, they, you know, they're protecting their business, but they said best practice is still, if you're going to have a, quote, a home chicken, a pet, you know, whatever you want to call that chicken, that best practice is to ensure that they're properly vaccinated, and actually that vaccinations, all vaccinations do not necessarily need to be done by a veterinarian, they can be done by owners, and that oftentimes, if you buy chicks from a, I don't know what the, from a, you know, a farm, a hatchery, a hatchery, is that you can buy them previously vaccinated for those things, I think that were mentioned in the document, so that's just by way of information that I found out since last meeting.
Are we ready to state our setbacks? Everybody know what they're going to say?
Yep. Do we want to do that, or do we want to wait for RJ's information to come out?
I think we shall wait till we have the information.
We don't have our own opinions? No, we want to wait?
I think we need to hear the citizens and what they've submitted.
Okay, well, we can hear that too. Okay. Um, well, we can hear that, too. Um, if you all don't want to give your opinions on this, we can wait.
I'm going to wait.
I'm sorry? Do we want to wait on this, or, um, after we, to get the information from RJ, we want to do it now?
I'm willing to give my opinion, but I'm certainly more than open to hear more information from all sources.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I'd like to keep us moving at least a little forward on this. Um, okay, Shelley, start us off. You got an opinion?
I, I remain consistent with, until I know more, until we have a, we have a history, I'd rather give this to more people rather than less. And fifty feet is far more, go for fifty feet because it opens up more residences than the original hundred feet did. And I'd like to see where this plays out and more than open to expanding it in the future.
Okay, all right. Uh, Ward three.
Uh, I like fifty feet because I like how we would just, just start with a few examples to see what would pop up, and we can later amend uh, the ordinance if it's being successful. And also, I think in our community, it should be limited to those, uh, in a more rural setting uh, with ample space on their lot to do that. Now, I don't know how to define that, but besides this fifty, so I guess that's what I would support that number right now.
Okay. Uh, Ward four.
Um, I'll, you know, I was throwing it out, and it's up to, uh, you know, up to change with more information from RJ. But I'll stay with, with the oddly sounding thirty-two and a half feet. Um, mostly based on the fact that if you go up to thirty-five feet, that comes pretty close to zoning out lots that are only seventy-five feet wide. Um, so the thirty-two and a half feet adds up, when you multiply it by two for each side lot, goes up to sixty-five feet, which leaves ten feet to build the coop and the surrounding, um, you know, fence or shrubbery or whatever else, uh, you know, the visual, the visual block. Um, and again, that could be subject to change from what RJ says, and also subject to change, you know, learning more information about, uh, you know, the, the lot depths. And if it turns out there's only five percent of the lots that are only seventy-five feet wide, maybe, you know, maybe I would raise that a little bit, but from the information now, I would say thirty-two and a half feet.
Nobody's locked in.
Right, yep.
Okay, nobody's locked in. We're just helping guide our solicitor on what he's doing. Um, Ward five.
Um, I am locked in at fifty from a dwelling or residence. And uh, I like fifty from a lot line, but could be tucked into going down some, depending on the feedback we get from RJ.
Okay, Ward six.
Uh, twenty-five feet from property line and, uh, obviously nothing to that individual's home or building.
Okay. Um, seven?
I, I prefer to go to thirty feet, um, based on my knowledge of folks who have chickens in the city of Pittsburgh, Ross Township, et cetera. Um, I've seen good success with smaller lots, and I don't see why our residents can't have that same success here.
Um, I am for fifty feet. So we have one, two, three, four, for fifty feet, four for fifty. And then we have, um, something at, two for something in the thirties. Okay, and one for twenty-five. Okay? So that's where we tentatively are right now, subject to change.
Madam President, I have one last question for Mr. Rob. Um, I forgot to ask it before. For, for those setbacks, and it, um, you know, it says fifty feet uh, from any street or dwelling, except the property owner's dwelling, and then not less than fifty feet from any lot line. How does that interplay with like a shed? Like, if somebody has a shed in their backyard, does it have to be fifty feet from the shed as well?
It's, it's their own, I, I think what it says is any of their own buildings.
Well, it says their own dwelling, so that would be, so like a shed wouldn't be their dwelling?
Right. I would not, from an enforcement perspective, require it to be fifty feet from a shed.
Right.
Yeah. I think maybe if we could just clarify it, you know, as dwelling or other owners' other buildings or something.
Yeah, we could, we could say fifty feet from primary structure, because a shed, a pool, a fence, anything like that is considered an accessory structure.
Yeah, I mean, it, it says street or dwelling. I mean, I, I, a shed is not a dwelling. I'd have to double-check and, and take a look, but I, of our zone.
Well, right, but the way it reads then is, it's, the dwelling goes with the except, right? So, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying. From any street or dwelling, okay, and the shed wouldn't count as a dwelling. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Any other comments before we move on? Okay, all right. Um, um, the oil and gas ordinance. Um, RJ, are you taking that?
Yeah, I'm really on the hot seat tonight, huh?
Yeah, you are.
And we're not even done. We have another zoning thing at the end. Um, so, oil and gas. Um, we, we did finish up the comment and review period, um, at the planning commission that was kind of put on hold um, prior to the pending ordinance resolution passage. Um, just kind of thinking, you know, let's, let's get that safety regulation level in place, and we can sort of come back and think about the districts, um, as we go. So after taking written comment from any commission members that wanted to, you know, put them in, um, I sort of filtered everything that was duplicative, made sure that it lined up with all the different parts of the ordinances, kicked it over to Gavin and Katie at our town attorney's office, and, uh, got feedback on basically, you know, yes, we can regulate this, or maybe this is a better way to do what you're trying to accomplish here, just sort of, you know, an overall review. Went over those at the planning commission. Um, all of those technical changes comments, we're fortunate that we have a couple of members in the planning commission that have familiarity with the oil and gas industry. So, um, they had some really great technical feedback. Uh, the list of those sort of high-level, what those changes proposed would mean were in the monthly meeting recap um, that was in all your meeting packets from the planning commission. Um, sort of the, the big, well, there, so there was the technical comments, there was a suggestion to also pursue separately a seismic testing ordinance, which is referenced in the oil and gas, um, proposed draft that we've got here, um, which I believe the town attorneys have a working draft of that, that they could easily bring to council whenever you're ready to possibly consider that. Um, if you choose to proceed with that recommendation. Uh, the final item on the meeting recap was zoning districts. Um, this has been definitely the, the, one of, one of the bigger issues of this whole discussion, and something that the planning commission was really wrestling with as well. Um, historically, it's been in the C2 and institutional districts. C2 was pretty much just the Ingamar neighborhood, so not totally sure how it ended up there. Um, but, I mean, then again, our existing ordinance doesn't really contemplate unconventional drilling, which is what you see more often now. Um, the institutional district, you know, it's, the district that has our largest land tracts in it, I would say, is probably the best way to tie those two issues together. Um, I know there's certainly been concern raised by, you know, different members of the bodies that have been involved in this with, you know, that covers the, the, the parks and the schools and the cemeteries and things like that. Um, and so the question is, does council want to proceed with it being in the institutional district since it's been there? Do you want to look at another district? I'm not really sure that I'm thrilled with any of the ones we've got on the books, or staff recommendation. Um, Franklin Park recently explored an overlay district concept for this, essentially acknowledging their built-out community. It's tough to find a really good place for this in any of the existing districts, and so, you know, sort of here's the section that it could theoretically be done without wiping out any of the underlying uses of that district that are perhaps more likely to occur in a built-out community. Um, so that is what I, what I bring to you today. That, that is the big question of how to move forward. And I'm happy to talk about any of the other details. I sort of came in midway to this process, so I might have to tap Gavin a couple of times for, for any of the older details, but that's it for now.
RJ?
Yes.
So, I admit to being a bit confused. And this could just be because I know what I said at the original meeting when we, um, it was the meeting when council voted on and approved the pending ordinance docu, doctrine to essentially adopt the then draft of a revised ordinance that provided more safety features to the town. I thought it was at that meeting, it could have just been me saying it, but that we said we are going to adopt the pending ordinance doctrine while we look, develop a concept for an overlay district. And I, I'm just confused as to, I thought that was the assignment from that meeting months ago, and now we're asking, being asked the question of, do we want to look at an overlay district?
So if, if that's, and I apologize if there was a miscommunication on my end, I may have misunderstood.
Please, I, it was what was in my head, and I did not go back and look at the meeting. That was just why I'm confused about why we're, I feel it's circular, and we've now waited months.
So the, part of the reason that we sort of had to come back to the planning commission was because there were quite a few technical comments from the folks. Um, and, you know, just with some of the other stuff like 5G going on, I think it, it got a little logjammed. But also, the planning commission had not given their sort of final, these are the recommendations that we have on this ordinance, or pronounced what their opinion was overall on which way to go, um, for the districting issue. Uh, I would say, at this point, you know, we, if, if we're okay to move forward with leaving it an institutional for now, and sort of immediately, like we were discussing, officially hitting the ground running on the overlay district, maybe looking at, you know, some sort of specialist that could help us out. Um, you know, then, then I would recommend that council move forward with making official the pending ordinance, uh, doctrine. But, you know, there, there has been some discussion, I think, on, um, whether folks are comfortable with the overlay district, if they're uncomfortable with it being an institutional at all still, and so that's kind of the, you know, if that's overall the will of council, I'm okay with that. That was ultimately the staff recommendation, was to take a look at it. But we would want to take action officially on the final adoption of what was the pending ordinance, with just some of the technical cleanup.
So that's the most pending.
And RJ, explain the reason that we want to do that, is because if we start fiddling around with doing an overlay, then technically, we're changing things, and so, um, we could lose that status of that temporary. Um, how are you explaining that to me?
The pending ordinance doctrine, yeah. You know what, I'm, because Gavin is the lawyer with the lawyer terms, I'm going to kick this one over to him, but, but you're going in the right direction, yes.
Okay, right. So, because that's, that's a pivotal point in this decision-making process about if we change the zone now, or we change it after we adopt it.
Right.
Right. I mean, you, you've said, council has essentially put on record its intent to adopt an ordinance that we call the pending ordinance, um, that moved, yeah, increased the safety regulations, uh, the testing requirements, uh, removed it from C2 and left it only in I. And so essentially, the pending ordinance, as we've talked about, the, the idea there is, okay, so it takes, there, there's a process to adopt a zoning amendment, and it takes time, usually about two months, i- if you're going at warp speed. So by, by acknowledging and passing that resolution, uh, when you did, essentially, that puts the public on notice that this is the ordinance that we're considering. So Kim, I think what you're raising is, hey, look, if we say now we're no longer considering putting it in the I district, and we want to start working on an overlay district, I think there's an argument to be made that, hey, look, that, that ordinance you just passed a couple of months ago is no longer a pending ordinance. You're now considering a new zoning scheme. So I think that's why, uh, you know, RJ's recommendation includes certainly looking into an overlay district. Uh, but I think in, in the interim, having, you know, proceeding to get this finalized, the ordinance that council's already approved uh, by that resolu, that pending ordinance resolution, essentially locks in those regulations, doesn't prohibit you to immediately go back and start thinking about an overlay district, but it codifies everything that you, that is sort of out there, sort of in limbo right now, while we're making this determination as to the next step.
Thank you. That's what I was, right. So RJ's, uh, so the recommendation is that we look at the, that we finalize what we want in the ordinance, leave it in I, we already decided to get rid of the C3, C3? To get rid of the C2, finalize the document, just leave it in I right now, pass that, and then come back and look at an overlay, so we don't possibly be viewed as changing all this, and then we lose those safeties. Someone could come in and say, oh, no, we, we don't have to go by those safeties, because you're really not considering this. And we would basically have what we had before, which was no safeties.
Yes, and still in the same district.
Is that a summary?
That is a good summary.
Okay, okay. I would like to go with that recommendation. I think that's, um, the safest way to move forward, even though I don't like it being in the institutional, you know. Um, but I think that's going to be the safest way to proceed. That's my opinion. Uh, other council members?
I, I agree. Um, I want the safety, uh, in place as quickly as we can and to expedite that, because I think the conversation about the overlay district is going to take some time and quite a bit of research, so I'd like to see that happen.
And any other, any other comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
I agree. I'd like to take that approach as well.
Okay. Um, if we have one more council member agree, we can, um, put on the agenda to go over the, um, all the changes that have been added to the most recent time and start working in that direction.
Great.
Okay, all right.
And I, I will note, if for some reason the overlay concept isn't the best fit, although we're thinking it will be, you can also do, you know, whatever you need to with the existing districts. That doesn't preclude any other option protecting ourselves now.
Uh, so you'll get, so we'll just add that to an agenda and bring that forward, and then go over that. Is that what we're going to do?
Yeah, um, Mr. Rob, if you could go over the process for moving forward from a pending ordinance resolution.
I mean, I, the way I was envisioning is because everyone has seen and already voted on the pending ordinance, we would present a redline version of that, uh, ordinance, so that you could see all the changes that were made based on the technical comments and some of the, some of the other, uh, uh, issues raised at the, at the planning commission meetings. Then, uh, you know, if, if council's comfortable with that on October twenty-sixth, uh, you can go ahead and actually vote to schedule a public hearing, um, and I guess that put it into December, um, to actually, you know, hear from the public and then possibly vote to enact the, uh, the ordinance. And that, that vote to schedule the public hearing also authorizes RJ, uh, to send those drafts to the appropriate, uh, planning review agencies to get those clocks ticking.
Okay. Um, I think that's, we have four that have said move forward with that, so I think that's what we'll do. Okay, put that on the agenda. Anything else on oil and gas? You think chickens is tough. Why do we get to oil and gas?
Hey, we're pretty good right now, so.
We will see. Um, okay, um, public safety.
All right, let me, uh, here.
Line on.
Yes, okay. And I believe we also have Eric Egley. Am I saying that correctly?
You nailed it.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, counsel, you have my report for the month. So after I call attention to a couple of items, uh, I'll take any questions you might have. Uh, but as you have probably already seen in my report, uh, I would be remiss if I did not mention that on September eleventh, um, I want, I, uh, Officer Carl Yane, uh, one of our newer officers, uh, his quick, uh, response and actions saved the life of a forty-five-year-old male who went down, was unconscious, not breathing. Officer Yanee Swin. Officer Yane's swift actions and his prompt performance, he deployed an AED, and he performed CPR, and he brought a man back to life. I think this is a couple of months in a row now where I've been able to, happy to report to you folks that our officers are, are saving folks out there on the street. So I, I provided Officer Yane with a letter of commendation, and I thought that I wanted to, I wanted to mention that to you folks this evening. The, the real big news that the police department has for you folks this evening is that I'm naming the 2019 McCandless Officer of the Year. For those council members who are new to, newer to council, you may not be aware, but we have an award for the last three or four years we've given out. It is the Albert Devlin Memorial McCandless Police Officer of the Year Award, and the award's named in honor of a McCandless Police Officer, Albert Devlin. He lost his life in a line of duty back on January 8th of 1973. The award was designed to recognize officers who are out in the community every day and who go above and beyond their normal duty by their dedication, proactivity, and loyalty to the department and the community. Every year, we have three nominations that, that we get from our command staff, along with a brief synopsis of why each was recommended. For this year, every member of the command staff unanimously nominated Detective Sergeant Eric Egley, and we have him on the line here with us this evening. As I mentioned in my memo, in 2019, Detective Sergeant Egley, he was instrumental in assuming the leadership role for our Investigations Division, following the retirement of Lieutenant O'Connor earlier in the year. In fact, he was a one-man show there for almost the entire year, he handled everything in the Investigations Division. He should be commended for that. And just last week, I was at a ceremony where he was not, he received another award with the North Hills Boroughs and Townships Police Association, they awarded him the 2020 Outstanding Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award, and that was based on his extensive investigation of a robbery at our Longhorn Steakhouse in 2019. Couple more things about Detective Sergeant Egley you folks might want to know, he's been 20-plus years in, in this line of work, over 17, almost 18 for him and I with the Town and McCandless Police Department. He's received many accolades and consistent promotions throughout his career here. He wears many hats, he comes to work every day with a positive attitude and a tremendous yet humble work ethic. In addition to his everyday duties as both a detective and a sergeant, he's a certified sniper with the North Hills SRT, and he's been called to assist in many critical incidents within the Pittsburgh region to include barricaded offenders as well as public protests. He shares his extensive training by conducting training for our department in active shooter scenarios and the use of tasers. He's also our tack officer and our evidence custodian. He also uses his specialized training to serve the district's attorneys drug task force and the attorney general's drug task force, and he conducts numerous community and school programs, he's a well-rounded officer. So I think it goes without saying that he is truly a self-motivated person, and I would ask you folks to honor, thank, and congratulate Detective Sergeant Eric Egley for his special dedication to duty and diligent work to ensure that our police department's the best and most professional that it can be. So Sarge, congratulations to you, and thank you, and it's been my pleasure to work with you for almost 18 years now. Are you on the line there, Sarge?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chief, very much, I appreciate that. Every day, you know, every day's different, that's what I enjoy about this job, and I strive to do what's best for our department, for our community, to make you, the department, community, and my family proud, so I appreciate that. Each day's a new challenge, and, and I look forward to the challenges that are coming ahead. And Chief Hawk and I started on the same day, and it's been a, a great, basically journey together up into this point, and I like the direction our department is heading, and I think Chief Hawk is doing an excellent job in his leadership role, and, and we have many more good years to come together, so I appreciate that.
Is your wife prepared to deploy the, your officer of the year pin?
She is, my wife is here and is gonna place the pin on my uniform, and Chief Hawk has given very specific instructions to her to pin it very firmly, so without further ado, my wife is here to put it on my uniform. Thank you very much, again, I appreciate that, Chief. Thank you to council as well, I'd look forward to talking to you folks in the future.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you very much. Congrats, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion? It looks like we need to move to award this, is that true?
I think that's what's been done in the past.
Is that, is that right? Chief Hawk, is that how we do it?
Sounds right, ma'am.
Okay, all right, Carolyn?
Okay, move toward the 2020 Officer of the Year Award to Officer Eric Egley.
Second. Okay, who was, who, who seconded?
David.
David, thank you. All those indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Double congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bob, can we get this on the website and everything?
We're gonna get some pic, some photos tomorrow. He, the sergeant's gonna have to wear that uniform again so that pin can be seen.
I will do that, I'll take care of that, thank you.
Well, and again, thank you, and, and, you know, thank you for your service, and thank your family for, you know, supporting you, and, you know, your family, your wife's on the, the camera here, so, you know, family of the officers is, we need to thank them as well.
I appreciate that, sir, thank you.
Anything else, Carolyn?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Public, we did safety, public works.
Madam President, everyone received the report in their packets, if anyone has any questions, take them now.
Mark, I see you're on here, the culvert down at the bottom of La Grande looks fabulous, very nice work.
I just sent him a microphone request.
I don't know if he wants to say anything, he probably.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah. Did you hear me?
I lost the connection here, I think, if you can hear me.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, we've been working on cleaning up and repairing retention ponds in the Pine Creek watershed area primarily. It's been an ongoing effort for at least a month now, we're going to continue as long as we can until the weather changes.
Anything else, Councilmember Woods?
That concludes my report, if there's no further questions.
All right, thank you. Services Committee?
Thank you, Madam President. The Fire Marshal's report for the month of August 2020 and permit report for September 2020, as well as code enforcement violation complacency report for the month of September 2020, is in the council packets. It's been a very busy month for both groups, and you'll find that in the information if anyone has any questions or comments. I know that Fire Marshal Stack is, I think, on this call, so let us know.
I had a real quick question for Dan. When you look at, hey, Dan, when you look at the fire company responses, you look for Highlanding and Marne Peebles, where it shows the total and then the in-district responses. So it looks like 60% of the responses are outside the district, am I reading that right? And why is that?
Well, how that reads is basically that we're assisting each other for the most part, you can kind of see there's a lot of different breakdowns if we go out of town into the different municipalities, however, the call would take place within their own respective districts, and that's how we kind of track it that way.
Okay. Okay.
So Dan, just for clarity, you're, they're responding to calls within the town but outside of their own districts?
Their own still district, that's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Right. And then if we go out of town, you can retract that at the, the following page, you can see mutual aid responses if we go into Ross Township, Franklin Park, Hampton, any of the surrounding communities.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else under services? Okay, Recreation Committee?
I know we have been encouraging, and we're hopefully going to start meeting with the Joint Recreation Board and Community Day. Everything is still so uncertain, but I am definitely hoping that we can start these meetings so we can plan really awesome programs for next year in, in both of those groups. And you also have in your packet, I move to approve an activity advisory committee project request for a virtual bingo game to be held on Thursday, November 12th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions, any questions at all about this? It was a big success last time, I'm glad you're doing it again.
Yes, in response to, because we had planned originally to have a game night with the library, but because of how their facility is keeping things in quarantine, and they just don't have the space available for an indoor activity right now, so we decided to repeat our, and have a turkey bingo instead.
All right, all those in favors, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, second bingo night approved. Is there any old business? All right, new business, discuss the proposed amendment to the town's home rule charter. So I think we all received the information, and I think it was in your folder, so what I thought we, and please, this is a discussion, this are just kind of my notes, but we can do this any way that council would like, is I thought this discussion would be to determine what, if in any action that council would like to take on their, these four individual topics, because of the, because, so tonight, what I'd like us to decide, what, what if any that we would like to take action on, but because, you see how, what our agendas are looking like, trying to get through all the things that we have to do, and we've not even started the budget yet, it, we probably won't be able to get started on them, Angela even said, till after the first of the year, but at least we'll know the direction, you know, that council kind of wants to go with these. So I, I think it's probably easiest, and, and Angela, I thought we'd do these like one at a time?
That's, I just, I would like to just quickly make a comment.
Sure.
Our town attorney had the opportunity to look over this prior to our meeting, and advised that the, the recall provision that I recommended is in violation of the PA constitution, so I'd like to remove that amendment from consideration.
I was gonna have him weigh in on each one individually, but we, that we can just do away with all the rest of them, you were okay with, though, Gavin?
Yeah, there, there's things that I've seen in other, in other charters, so, yeah, they're, they're really a council decision more than a legal decision, from what I can tell.
We just wanted to make sure that, you know, everything was, everything was okay, you know, before we went forward with them. So, so I'm thinking, is it okay with everyone to just go down them just one at a time, you know what they're about, we can go down and we can name them, and then we'll just go by nods if we want to look at them further? What should the choices be? Look at them further, not look at them, or definitely pursue them? What are you, are those the, the choices? What do we think?
Questions?
Pretty frozen. Uh-oh. She froze again.
I think Kim is a little frozen on my end.
Yep.
There you are.
He's back.
There we go.
I, I don't know, we've gotten all new everything, I don't know what's wrong, sorry. So is that all right with everyone to proceed like that, or does someone have a better idea? Angela, do you have a better plan?
I, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on the process of what would happen in, in as much as, council doesn't need to decide how we feel about each of these ordinances, what we're deciding is whether we want to use the ordinance to put a question on the ballot for the voters to decide.
Right.
So I just want to make sure we're clear on that, and then, yes, I think the, I think the question tonight is, which do we want to pursue next year?
Okay, okay, all right. That's right, and that's what this would be, we wouldn't be deciding to do this or not to do it, we would be decide, or to, because this would be a voter decision, so we would be deciding to move forward with putting them on the ballot. Okay, yes, I'm getting nods, thank you. When everyone holds still, I think you're frozen again. Okay, so keep moving, if you can. All right, so the first one is the unexpired terms of appointees by council, to council by election. So the, and Angela, you can chime in, or if you want to give the definitions, you can, but this basically, for example, David was appointed position, right now, David will fill out that term of, that unexpired term, and, and if we had this amendment, if I understand it correctly, then David would have had to run in this fall's election.
No, I'm sorry, that's not the way that that would work. I think, I think Councilman Taral would be a better example for purposes of this example, because the next time a municipal election will take place, Ward 4, Ward 2, and Ward 6 will all be up for election, so if Councilman Smith wanted to run again, he would have to do that anyway because his term would expire. But in the case of Councilman Taral, for example, he's filling out the majority of a four-year term, so the next time Ward 3 would ordinarily come up for election would be in 2023, I apologize if I said the wrong year previously, but what this would say is that in 2021, which is the next time there's a municipal election.
Only municipal election?
Correct.
Okay, I thought just the next election, okay.
No, municipal elections only, so he would only fill out about a year and a half of the four-year term, which would give the voters an opportunity to say, to me, it takes power a little bit out of council's hands and puts it back in the voters' hands to allow that, that ward to decide who the representative is gonna be, and they may well pick Councilman Taral, he's a, I think we made a good choice, you know, but I think that it just gives the opportunity back to the voters.
So if there was an election this year, if this was the municipal election year, then he would have to run this year?
Yes, I think we need to set up a, a couple of time constraints, like if it's within so, so close to a, an election, maybe we don't appoint somebody until the election. You know, we'd have to work out those sorts of details, but the general idea would be to, to allow that seat to be up for election.
I don't like leaving seats vacant if possible, that just allows for 3-3 stalemate a lot of times on some, some tough issues. What do you all think?
Madam President, I had a quick question. It's to council, it might be to Mr. Rob, I don't know. Is there a, I, I like it, I'm just wondering, is there a, is there a reason other than just wanting to do it, why the election years are staggered for the council seats?
Not sure I can answer that question.
I don't know if there's like a legal requirement or a, you know, because that's the only thing that comes to mind here of a, of a tripping point, is?
Yeah, that would not be, that would not be a problem, and I could tell you, you know, until we looked at the charter this time around when Mr. Taral was up for, for appointment, I was a little surprised that it was set up the way it is, where, you know, you're, you fill the, the entire remainder of the term rather than until the next municipal election, because I know the borough code offhand, that's not the way it would be handled, it is, you know, it's filled at the next municipal election for that, for that spot, so they're essentially less than two-year appointments, you know, the way that plays out, so, yeah, there's not, there's no state law that would prevent you from, you know, filling a vacancy in the means that Ms. Woods has proposed.
Okay. Great.
I, I think a time limit would be important here, because I think appointing someone in June and them having to try to run, or, or anyone trying to run in that short of a time would be really difficult. Everyone, not everyone, a couple people here know what it's like to run a campaign, it's, it's, it's a lot, you know? really difficult. Everyone, not everyone, a couple of people here know what it's like to run a campaign. It's 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 a lot, you know. And 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 then how do you? How do you meet those deadlines? You know, you to to get to get on the ballot, right? You had to have been in the been in the primary unless you were unless you're going to be a write in. I mean, and then you have to have, you know, your signatures and you have to have all those things. So we it couldn't, we couldn't have appointed it appointed him in June. He couldn't even get on the I don't know that he would even make the deadlines to be on the ballot in November.
I would I would say that this is something that we could get into. Like, I think the it just the concept is something that we want to proceed with is what we need to decide tonight. And the details of the timing are things that we could work out whenever we decide to discuss this next year. I think there's plenty to talk about, but we're not reinventing the wheel here. Or we don't need to. This is this is established in other municipalities.
Okay, all right. So let's just take, let's just do a raise of hands of everyone who would like to move forward with this and then look at the wording and how it's put together and then decide if that's how we want to put it on the ballot. Is that what you're saying? Or are we just saying, yes, we want this to be on the ballot, period? We want to move forward with that.
This has to go through the normal ordinance process. So we would, you know, this would have to come up again on an agenda as just this item. And we could work out all the details of what the ordinance would look like at that time. And the ordinance would be the instruction to put it on the ballot.
And I don't want anyone to over commit on a position until you actually see the piece of legislation and the and the potential referendum question in front of you.
Right. So we would just be saying whether we want to move forward with this or not? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, I'm definitely voting for this because you haven't seen it. But do you want to move forward with this concept to consider an ordinance for a referendum?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, good. All right, who is interested in moving forward forward with this? Raise your hand. So I can just see. Okay. Oh, Carolyn. You don't have a hand.
No.
Sorry.
I don't really. I think we need to talk about this a little more, so I'm not in favor.
Okay, all right. So there are only three council members who are in favor of moving forward with this. So this one we are not moving forward with. All right. Next one, term limits for town council members. I think the term limit that you called for Angela was for two terms, two full terms. Was that it?
With a maximum of 10 years.
Okay, two full terms with a maximum of maximum of 10 years. So if you got a point, you kind of halfway through and then ran, you would still get that. That's how you get to come up with the 10 years. Okay, so are there any comments on this? Or is this something? Anyone have any comments about this?
I have a comment. I like I do appreciate the idea of term limits. I think I think two is too limited. Because sometimes things take a long time. I would rather see three. That can be part of the future conversation if we decide to keep talking, I guess.
Okay. So so Tricia, you're saying that you would be interested in looking at this if we came up with language for three terms?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Anyone else have any comments on this? Yes.
I just had a question. Bob, in your tenure, have you seen difficult, you know, finding people to run for local office? Like, does the term limit create more problem?
Well, I think, you know, I've I've seen that problem occur. And in my in my past community, the three people who were sitting on the board when I left had all run unopposed because nobody would come forward to run against them. So my thinking is that if they weren't running, that somebody else would have. But I think there is that potential. But I I don't know. I'd like to think that there's a lot of good people out there who can who can run. It really is going to. I know that this is a community that's much more engaged than my last community was. So I would like to think that it's more likely to occur here. But it's possible. It is possible. I can't say that it wouldn't be.
Any other questions or comments about this?
Yes, my only comments. I and by the way, I really thank council member Woods for all the efforts she put into this. These are very thoughtful things. That I I and I think she did a great recap of all of them. As far as term limits, I really have to tell you, I am I am personally kind of conflicted on this because I certainly I actually agree with council member Clunin that I think two is too few. Because I think I don't want to overlook the value of experience. And I mean, what I've learned is that there's a whole lot more to being a council member than just showing up at meetings. And for really committed people, it is a huge commitment. And I think every day that you're in the position, you learn a lot more. So I I think that there's a real benefit to the town for experience and longevity, maybe not 40 years, and I think a change is good. And if someone can go off and still run again in four years, that kind of solves that. But I don't. This is one thing that I do. I don't think is is necessarily necessary. But if so, in that way, it's not something that I feel strongly about moving forward with. But I would agree with council council member Clunin that if the if council chooses to, I would want it to be more than two terms.
Any other comments on this? Yes, David.
Um, yeah, I you know, I like the I like the three terms. I think I'm kind of torn on it. I overall, I'm in favor of going forward with it. You know, I don't know if there's some way to make an exception where nobody else is running for the seat. You know, I don't know if there's a way to wordsmith it because that's my only concern is that you know, somebody is is turned out. Nobody else runs for the seat and then council ends up appointing somebody to fill that seat. That's my only worry. So maybe there could be a way where, you know, you could exceed the term of it if nobody else runs. But as a concept, I'm in favor of it. And I do also want to thank council member Woods for putting all of this together because this was a ton of stuff to put together.
So I guess the question that I have about term limits or that I've always had about term limits was what what are you trying to accomplish with term limits?
Building a government of the people, getting them involved in the process. I think that when you have turnover like that, it necessarily forces that. I think we do have an engaged community here. I could I could pick out, you know, a whole full council out of our committee members that we have right now, I think would be excellent council members. I think that what this does is it forces us to build that, you know, to to reach out and try to get more people involved. And I just think then then you have people who come up here onto council, serve some time, go back into the community, are knowledgeable about the way that it works, understand it. You just keep building more and more engaged citizens. And also, one of the other things I mentioned in the proposal was that you I think it could eliminate some of the contentiousness of our elections if we if we serve time. You know, of course, people are always welcome to run against an incumbent, but that necessarily kind of means you have to carry the banner of of wanting change. And it's not something that a lot of people are comfortable with. So I think this just allows seats to open up, takes away the contention for a seat and just, you know, recognizes that anyone can be a representative for their ward. There's there's nothing special about being a council member. You just have to be willing to put the time in and and work hard.
And I don't see how term limits change that because that's how the people here who were elected became elected. They ran and they were elected. So I'm not sure. I don't like the idea of taking choice because that's that's what I see this as is taking choice away from the citizens. If they decide they want to keep the same person, they should be allowed to do that. And to tell them, no, you can't have this person. If they don't like them, you can look at the previous election. If they don't like you, you will be voted out. They don't want you, you will be voted out. If they it doesn't seem fair that if constituents want to keep someone, that that option is taken from them. And that's the thing that that I don't like about this is this is you know, it's about choice. And I think you start limiting people's choices when you say, no, you can't vote for this person because they've been there too long. It's a the learning curve associated with council, and you all know this, but the people watching this may not know this, is incredibly steep. And there is a lot, a lot to learn. So this is my in the middle of my fifth year. And, you know, I can't believe all the things that I'm still learning all the time. So there's there's a lot here. There's a lot here to do. You know, that's I mean, I appreciate the fact that people support the idea of term limits, but 98% of all incumbents are reelected. So if people really supported term limits, then they would vote those people out. I think people support the idea of term limits, but they don't really support term limits, or they would vote people out. So I don't really think it's what they I don't think it really is. If you talk to people, this sounds good, but I think if you talk to people, then they're like, well, no, I still vote for the same person all the time. So you know, and that that's that's your choice.
And Madam President, I would just remind you that what I'm asking is for us to put the question to the voters to ask what they think on this issue, who would ultimately decide whether or not they think it's appropriate.
The voters have the question every election and who they want to vote for. That's my
And I pointed out that the, you know, a lot of people in council have run. I've lost the word now. People typically don't run against incumbents until relatively recently in our council history. So I think that when you take away the incumbent, that we will see more people. And I think we see that in the appointments we made this year. There's six people come up for council, you know, put their names for to be appointed to council. I think there's plenty of people who are interested in this. And I think that running against an incumbent is a huge hurdle for a lot of people to overcome.
Any other comments on this? David?
I I would just personally, I would agree with council member Woods on that point. You know, this is actually something that I've wanted to do for a while, and I never really knew how to get into it. And I, again, me personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else. It was a situation where when position came up, I said, this is a great opportunity for me to do it without having to try to figure out how to run an election. And part of that being against an incumbent. You know, I can see both sides of it for sure. And you know, I would even be willing to up the limits to, you know, 20 years or something. But you know, as a concept, I would support moving forward with it. But just to share personally, my story, that's that's kind of where I'm coming from on that.
Any other comments before we decide? Okay. Please raise your hand. Carolyn, you'll have to speak. I'm sorry. Those who would like to support moving forward with term limits for council. Okay, all right. Well, one, two, three, four. Carolyn?
I'm not in favor.
Okay, okay. So the raising of hands was for going forward for term limits, right?
I think there were five hands, right?
Yes, no, there were. There were.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought you said four.
No, no, but there were five. Okay, all right. So move forward, moving forward with term limits. Okay, and the last one is eliminating political qualifications for town council appointees.
Yes, Madam President, this this is a point that has confused me for some time. I just I think that we can find ourselves in a very sticky situation with the current situation. And I'll use myself as an example. I'm a registered Republican. I won a Democratic write in, so I won the election on the Democratic ticket. If I were to vacate my seat for some reason, you know, which party would council have to use to appoint a new person? Likewise, within the past very recent history, within the past eight years, we've had two council members who won on both tickets. So I think there's potential for some some interesting situations I think we can avoid.
The charter says that the person, it doesn't say the party that they were elected on. It says the person of the same, a person of the same political party. So it would be so that that decision is based on what the party was of that person, not not the party that they were elected on. So that's how our charter reads now.
Right. So to that point, I would just say that, you know, somebody could be registered as the Constitution Party or the Green Party. And then what's council to do in that situation? Because you could be any political affiliation and run in a major party ticket and win an election. So if I was if I was Constitution Party, just to use that for example, and I won on the Democratic ticket, and then I resigned or I moved or some other way vacated my seat, would you would council then have to find someone from the Constitution Party to replace me?
As as it reads right now, yes, that's what
That's my concern is that I think that we'd be putting ourselves in a near impossible situation. Which I think we can eliminate. And I guess for me, this really tied back into the first thing that I mentioned, which was the you know, having the election for the appointed council member because when you when you have this situation where the town council is appointing and trying to guess what the voters from that area want, you know, that would have turned it over to the voters again more quickly. So these kind of went hand in hand for me. But at any rate, I think that this eliminating this keeps council out of some sticky situations.
Are there any comments, David?
I know you're shocked, but I have a comment. The this one's really sticky for me. My inclination is is almost to to keep it as is unless you can't find a qualified candidate from the same party from who's registered with the same party. Because I do think there's value to to trying to keep. And I know that council member Woods, the situations you're talking about, kind of, you know, that kind of make it more confusing for sure. But I do think there's at least some value to trying to keep in line with that. And maybe, you know, with with some kind of language, and I know we're not talking about specific language, but in terms of the concept, if you if you say unless no qualified candidates from that party apply, you know, then council can can basically disregard the party. I think I'd be in favor of something like that. I don't know if I'd be in favor of getting rid of the party affiliation altogether.
If I may, it is unusual. It's an unusual provision.
That we have now?
Yes, it's an unusual provision that you have now. Of the municipal codes, first class township, second class township, boroughs do not have that requirement. They just have the requirement of being an elector or registered as an elector for one year within that community by and large. And that allows the council to pick the best person that they have available to them who submitted their interest. But I remember having a conversation one evening with the council president. And I was dumbfounded when she said what she said about it.
Into Councilman Smith's point, you know, I tried to come up with on my own ways to clarify this, and I just kept hitting dead ends when I thought through the what it would actually look like in different situations. So if if eliminating it So if, if eliminating it doesn't sit well with council, but modifying it to clarify it somehow does sit better, I'm fine with that. I, I just think that as it's written right now, it, it leaves us in a kind of, you know, bad territory.
And moving forward would allow you to have that further discussion.
Correct.
I have a comment.
Shelley?
I think that maintaining this, I mean, and in a way, it's just a facade as, as Councilwoman Woods has pointed out. You know, it's a new day, it's a new age. It's the Green Party, there's the independents, there's anyone. If there was ever a time to take a stand on something like this, it is now. Municipal government needs to be more nonpartisan, in my opinion. This can't be about partisan politics. And this screams to me of partisan politics, especially in a world where we're, we are now, you know, we have the practical experience of having two sitting council members who, who face the same thing that, you know, that they were actually Republicans who, who were write-ins on the Democratic ticket. So Councilman Woods, I am 100% behind you on this proposal.
Any other comments? I see this as being very easily politically exploited. And I think that if you have a, one Democratic seat that was held by, let's use the example Trish. We have one Democrat on this committee. If Trish resigned, a lot of councils, maybe not this very enlightened and objective council, but a lot of other councils would say, we're putting a Republican in there, any Republican, because we want a whole Republican council. So I feel like this is definitely political, could be used politically. I think if everyone, if the constitutional party wins, then we look for a constitutional person to fill that, to fill that, fill that position. And if we can't find one, then it goes downtown for the judges to find someone. And that has not been the, the case, as you saw. When we opened up the doors, we had people come in. But if enough people in the council work for constitutional or vote for constitutional party, then there are going to be a lot of constitutional people there who may be interested in filling that vacancy. So to me, I worry about the political ramifications of this. That's all I got to say. Any other comments?
President, one more comment to follow up on a couple things. But in one, in one thing, I'd even go so far as to say, I'd be in favor of leaving it as is, except adding or independent. You know, appointing somebody from the same political party or a registered independent voter, which I think would at least go a little ways, because I share the same concern as you, Madam President, that I, I don't think it would happen on, on this current council. But you can't plan around councils always being the same. You know, and, and so I could easily envision it happening with a different group of people. And so I'd want to, I agree with the concept of trying to loosen it, but I do also see the potential to abuse it. And so maybe even just as little a change, I'd be willing to, to move forward, to look at it more, understanding that we wouldn't know exactly what we were looking at. You know, even just adding or independent, or a registered independent, you know, I think would, would help it along to me.
Now, just remember that these are, these are not free, right? We have to pay to have these put on the ballot. The cost that Angela quoted was between $6,508,000 to, I don't know if that, is that each one Angela or?
No. We, we do not pay to put this on the ballot. There's no cost to do that. Where the cost comes from is the, writing the ordinance, just as any other ordinance. And what the town manager has indicated, and no offense to our town attorney, but if we could get one at that price, then we could use the language to write the, the others. So that would be a one-time $500 or $1,000 that we need to pay. It could work out the other ones with staff. The, the bulk of that expense comes from advertising, which is why it makes sense to do several of them at one time, because you can, on a single mailer, you could put several questions out to the, you know, what you would be doing with the advertising is alerting the voters to the fact that these questions are going to be on the ballot. And so having several of them on one mailer would be more economical than doing one of these a year. You incur that same expense repeatedly. So total, for however many we look at here, it would be, you know, within the range that I presented. So if we only move forward of one, it's the same price. If we move forward of three, we'd be looking at the same price essentially.
Are there any other comments on this?
I'm sorry, but I do. It's, it's going to sound completely inconsistent, but I just throw this out to all of council, because I think I've been very, very open about my own personal opinions. And then I think there's almost like a last question. And again, with all due respect to Councilmember Woods and her effort on this, so it's not to take anything away from that, but I think it's just a basic question of, so we've agreed that some, individually, nope, that we all think some of these ideas are really good. Some of us don't like all the ideas, but in general, these are worthy things for us to look at. And but at this point in time, I just ask the question of, with everything else that is going on in the town, with all of the things that are active, proactive, that we need to do to keep the town running, I just ask the question if the timing of this is, and the importance and the priority of this is a thing that is necessary for council to be spending its time working through language and getting on a referendum? Or should we be spending our time passing ordinances that actually get things done that need to be done today? I'm not saying I know the answer to the question. I'm just throwing it out there for consideration. Timing, it's, it's timing, not value.
I agree with Shelley.
All right. Well, are you saying that you want to go back and decide on all this one? Okay. What are you proposing?
I'm just saying the whole, I'm bringing this up as the whole concept of make, taking time to amend our charter and go through a referendum in time for the next, next election, not to take it off the table permanently by any means. Is it just the right time, the right place, the, the right use of council's time and legal fees to be pursuing this at this moment when there are so many other things that need to be done in the town that it will directly benefit our residents potentially today, tomorrow, and a year from now? That's what I'm saying. It's a question.
Okay. So we had already said that we wanted to pursue this number two. Do we want to just pause right here and consider that question for all of them? Or what do you all, what do you? I, I think, actually, I think that's a very good point. You know, I'm thinking of all the stormwater management that we have, the ambulance authority, you know, this. I mean, the list goes on and on of, of all the things. You know, our town hall employees have to have space heaters to stay warm in the winter. I mean, we have so many things that, that need to get done. I, that's actually a very good point. That's actually a very good point, Shelley.
Madam President, if I may, go ahead, Shelley.
No, no. I, I just really want to repeat. I do believe these are worthy things that this council should be considering and talking about. I am only questioning the timing. And my suggestion is that we, I guess you would call table it for the next election. I just don't think it's worth, with so many other things to do. I'm just saying, delay it, don't lose it forever, because these are very good points that Councilmember Woods has brought up that shouldn't be lost into the future.
And Shelley, is that a motion that you're making to table these?
I will make a motion to table these.
Charter amendments?
The charter amendments. But I'd like some, I would, I would like to, I don't want to lose them either.
Well, the table, they're not, they're not lost when they're tabled. They're just put on hold.
That's what I guess I would say. I'd make a motion to table the charter amendments. That's my motion.
Okay. Gavin, are we doing this right?
Sure.
I need a second, right?
Second.
Okay, all right. All right, Shelley made a motion to table. Okay. And I think Mike got the.
Mike seconded.
Mike got the second in there. Okay, any more discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to say that I think that I don't foresee a time when this council's not busy with a lot of other things going on. I think the timing of this right now is that we, it would be this council. There's no other municipal elections between now and then that could see this through. None of us are a foul of what we're, any of the term limits we're talking about, any of the number of years. So we're not, you know, picking on someone or anything like that. We're all fresh-faced here, early in our tenure. So I think that this would be the appropriate, and this isn't like a swan song, like I'm, you know, we're not at the end of our careers in suggesting this just for the look of it. This is something, you know, valuable that we could do right now.
Any other comments before we vote?
Yeah, I, I just agree that I don't think there's going to be, there's never going to be a, a good time. I mean, there is always going to be stuff that you can say is more pressing. The self-governance stuff is always stuff that can get pushed to the back. So I prefer that we just kind of continue discussing it at a good pace. Doesn't have to be rushed or anything, rather than tabling it for the reasons that Councilmember Woods said.
Any other comments?
I, I agree that this might be better looked at after we get through the budget, because I think that's going to be a critical issue considering pandemic this year. But I don't want to let this go indefinitely. I'm not sure if, Gavin, if we, if we're, part of the motion can be a time when we come back, like actually schedule the renewal of the conversation. Also, I guess, you know, bottom line is, I would love to see a lot of these questions become moot by the fact, like, why are we running as political parties for our town? I think Shelley spoke to that, that we really should be acting in a nonpartisan way for our residents. But I know that that big change probably won't happen in my tenure here. But I just want to let you know, I wish we could be nonpartisan, and these points wouldn't even need to be brought up.
Any other comments? Okay, there's been a motion and a second to table the charter amendments. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we'll do a, Bob, you going to do roll call vote?
Yes, Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Nay.
Ward five?
Nay.
Ward six?
Aye.
Ward seven?
Aye.
Ward one?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion, yes. So, all right. All right.
This is good. And if I could, I know you asked a question during that, but there, there's no specific requirement as far as how long you'd have to wait. So, you know, upon your initiative, you know, you discussed with the council president, but that can be brought back to the table at an appropriate time in the future. You're not locked in any, any period.
Right, right.
Gavin, how does that work? Do you make a motion to untable it?
I mean. From the table.
To remove from the table.
That's the technical, that's the technical Roberts rules answer. Mr. Graham? Well, well done.
Yeah.
That's Roberts rules, right?
I have not looked at Roberts rules in like 30 years, so. I know the basics, but once it gets down to the actual step-by-step process.
And that's why we have our solicitor, who is our parliamentarian also.
Right.
Okay. I sent everyone very late, but it did come to you in your email a little bit of a change in our appointment policy. The way we've changed our committee, we've made nominating committees, even though we didn't call them that, by changing how we're interviewing candidates for our committees, boards, and authorities. So I looked up the procedure to see if it is any different, and I ran it by Gavin, and it looks like I waded through it okay. So I, I just wanted to run it by everyone. And then there was a little tweak at the end that I wanted to see. And this comes off of what Mike brought up. What he has articulated is what I have said for a long time and what council members have said over and over and over. So I, so council can decide how they vote, okay? So I wanted to bring this up to you and see if you want to change a couple things. So the beginning of this is just Roberts rules. So you'll know when you come out of committee. And let's just do the zoning committee, Trish, okay? Because you're, you're the liaison there. So Trish would come out, and I would say nominations are now open for the position of zoning committee, okay? And are there any nominations from the nominating committee, right? And Trish represents that committee. So Trish would say, the nominating committee nominates Mrs. Jones for the zoning committee, okay? And then I would say, are there any other nominations? So anyone else on council could nominate someone else if they wanted someone else, okay? So you're not locked in to who the committee nominates. So you may like someone else, read the resume, know them, whatever. So that, so you still, no one's losing any options here. In fact, you're gaining options doing it this way. And then a council member can say, I move to nominate whoever. And then I would call for further nominations. If there is no nominations, then I would say, if there are no further nominations, then the nominations are closed. Now, this is, this is where the change is. And tell me what you think about this. Is, let's say there are two people nominated for one spot, okay? And Tricia nominated one person, and Mike nominated one person. We would do a roll call vote, and you would say the person you voted for. Instead of voting against, like Tricia would nominate first, because she's a nominating committee, according to Roberts rules. So instead of voting for Tricia's person first, and you have to vote on them, if you do it the other way, you have to vote on in the order that they're nominated. So we would vote for Tricia's. But if Mike had wanted the other guy, then he has to vote against Tricia's person, who could be a great person, who could be highly qualified. He just likes this one a little bit better. So it kind of puts you in a position to vote positively for, vote positively for someone instead of against someone. It's a completely proper way to vote. It's different than how we've done it. It feels nicer, it feels more affirming. I think it would make people who, well, why did they vote against me? Not have that feeling of a citizen when they kind of go out on a limb to apply for these committees. So, and then I, I'm sure your mind is going to, well, what if three people are nominated, and it's three and three and one? Well, the, the person who got one vote is off the island, right? So now we're down to the three and three. So you would just, if it's locked, you would just continue to vote until you came down to, to one person. So I'd like to hear, we can continue to do it the way we're doing it other than changing the nominating committee thing that we kind of need to change. But what do you think about this new way of voting?
I'm all for it.
I, I love it. The only thing I'd add is, once all the nominations are made, and I, I know this is how it works, but to the extent it's not clear there, once all the nominations are made, then you have the discussion. So then you discuss those candidates before actually putting one forward, so that now your discussion is just limited to the nominated people instead of, you know, the position as a whole and all the candidates. But I, I absolutely love this.
Madam President, a question for the town attorney. Sorry, I'm getting feedback. Did I, did I hear you say in the previous meeting that this, like, these appointments could be discussed in executive session?
Appointments for non-elected. Appointments for non-elected office, yes, they can be discussed in the executive session.
So.
Gavin, you have always told us not elected appointments were not executive session. You're talking about for committees.
Right. I'm talking about for committees. The only, the only time that you're not allowed to talk about an appointment or an employment issue, whether it's an employee or appointee, is if it's for elected office. I was not the one who suggested that we make all the, you know, interviews for all these committee spots that they had to be done in a public meeting. That was, that was decided by, you know, the last council who made that, that policy decision.
So to that point, Madam President, if that's, if that's the rule, I don't see why we wouldn't conduct these in executive session. I think it'd make it much more comfortable for the people who are being interviewed. It would allow council to have a candid discussion about which candidate we thought was the best fit. And we wouldn't have to do this all in the public sphere.
And I'd like to add, there's been times where there has been only one candidate up for a position and there may be a situation where you don't have confidence in that candidate and you'd rather put the word out to get some more candidates. And how does this scenario fit with that?
Yeah, I mean, the reason that these, that were all done at public meetings, I think it was, at least at the time, it was stated as a transparency type matter that, you know, council really wanted to make sure that, you know, no one was being accused of any sort of backroom dealings and then that everyone was getting a fair shot at every interview. And, and so that's why we, you know, started continuing the meetings and scheduling these interviews as, as quote unquote, public meetings.
For those of you who were not here before, there were no interviews, there were no applications. People were tapped for these positions. And they, you didn't even know that they were available. So council did decide to make these public and encourage people to, to imply, to apply. And to take away that whole perception of they're picking their friends behind closed doors. So having experienced what I experienced and having fought so hard to get that out of the back room, I strongly support doing all of this publicly. I mean, I understand some people are uncomfortable being out and, you know, interviewed. I, I appreciate that, I know that. But all of our meetings are televised now, so they have to be comfortable with being out. They have to be comfortable with talking out. They're, they're being, they're, they're gonna be on YouTube for all of these meetings. So that, you know, we're all product of where we've been. And so that's the reason that I strongly support that. Council decides that they want to take this back into executive session. I was under the impression it was only personnel and real estate and litigation were the only things that were executive session. That was my understanding, that's the principle that I've been working under for five years. So I'm not sure, this doesn't seem like it meets that to my criteria, but I'm not the attorney.
I don't know if the discrepancy is maybe, I mean, the official action, the appointment and the motion all needs to happen at a public meeting. That can't happen beyond closed doors. But discussion regarding appointments of non-elected office as well as, you know, hiring of employees is, is in line with Sunshine Act in executive, you know, in executive session.
Can I ask a question that might be a, I don't know, a compromise between the two? Because, so I think it's worthy to have public transparency. Nothing wrong with the, the interviews. Because I think that council has shown itself to be very engaged and asks good questions. And I think it's a good thing, you know, to have publicly. What I think is part of what is missing, from, this is my perspective, is that I would, if, if it's proper and legal, according to the Sunshine Act, I would love to be able in executive session to have an honest and open discussion with my fellow council members about their impressions of why someone might be better for a position than other. And, you know, make, make a decision collectively, cooperatively, based upon a transparent, open interview to the public that ensures that there's been no tapping on the shoulder. So anyway, it's kind of like a middle ground, but I'm just saying somehow, some way, I would love to not be put what I found to be, I find to be very uncomfortable, awkward positions that we've been, that we all experience when we do, we have to move right from interviews to appointing people and not knowing who's gonna nominate who, not having any, any interaction, so.
So what I was proposing tonight was changing this voting procedure so that we voted for people instead of against people. Are we for that? Okay.
Yes.
Carolyn, I got all nods from everybody. Are you for it? Okay, all right, all right, good. So we can definitely move forward with that. Do we need to decide at this moment if we want to start, do, I mean, we can, if you want, to decide that we would have an executive discussion, executive decision, discussion, and then at the following meeting make the, go with this procedure? Is that, yes, David?
My thought would be to, to leave the, the process that you just outlined as is with a public discussion about whatever the appointment is, but also just have the ability to have a discussion in executive session in addition to that essentially. You know, if there's things that we want to talk about that maybe, you know, we're, we want to talk about concerns with a certain person that we don't necessarily want, you know, because some things might just be a feeling and you don't want to put something negative out there based on a feeling. But at the same time, if you have a feeling, you want to be able to say, you know, I, I don't know, this just struck the wrong nerve with me. So, I mean, I'd suggest just having the ability to do that in executive session, but still have the process that you outlined as the actual nomination process with a discussion period attached to it.
Would that be a mandatory with every appointment or would it be optional?
I'm good either way. Whatever.
I need to, I need to hear from some other people. Do we need to, is this what we, is this what we want to do? We want to move these into executive session?
Madam President, question? We also previously discussed having the liaison and the alternate liaison conduct the interviews.
Right.
So is that gonna be public?
Yeah, yeah, we were gonna record all those.
Okay, okay, okay. Or have them like at a public meeting when we're back to in-person sorts of things.
Right.
Okay, yeah, all right. And then I guess my, my only concern with what Councilman Smith is suggesting is that if we say that this is not a mandatory practice for every appointment and then we only meet in an executive session for certain appointments, I think it kind of indicates that somebody's got a red flag about somebody or a situation, you know, that kind of, it sort of becomes obvious that that's the, that's the case. So to me, I think that we either need to do it all the time or not at all.
Speak up, friends.
Will it slow down the process materially?
Of course, of course it will, because we'll have to be interviews. Then we'll have to wait to the next meeting to have the executive session. Unless we have it at the beginning, if we had it at the beginning of the meeting, then it wouldn't slow down unless we had some other executive session that we needed at the beginning of the meeting. Other than that, we would have it at the end, I guess, or maybe included in that one.
I, I would love that to just do the interviews, executive session about the interviews and then the meeting.
Well, the interviews won't be done by all council, you know, we changed that.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Okay.
But the, the report from the nominating committee should be in the council's packet on Thursday night or Friday night prior to the meeting. You could have, if, you could hold the, a brief executive session to go over that report and ask any questions and proceed to the vote at that meeting. The, if there is a question mark.
Is that before or after our attorney interviews?
It would have to be after.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So now we're, where we, what are we backed up to now, 6 o'clock?
We're already at 6:00 if we go a half hour apiece.
5:30 then?
Well, if, if we have one person, do we, do we need to hold an executive session for one person unless somebody has a concern? There can always be a move to table the, the appointment.
That's what we did before, yeah. So do we want to discuss nominations in executive session before we vote? Give me hands to people who want to do that. Okay, 1, 2, oh, Mike, yours was up. That was so fast, I almost didn't see you. Okay, all right, so we have four people. Carolyn, do you want to discuss in executive session nominations or no?
That's fine.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so that's five. So, all right, so that's, that's what we'll, that's what we do, we'll do. And Bob, I'll talk to you and see, I don't know that we have to, we don't have to write this up. This can just be a practice, right? Right, Gavin?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good, so I'm, I'm, that's off my list.
Although, although I may, I may rewrite what I put together and expand upon that just so that everybody has it in writing. There will just be a few extra lines.
Oh, you mean adding to what I sent you?
Well, I'll add this process to what I already put together.
Oh, I see.
So that everybody has the entire process.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Okay. The only potential question I see is, I know that there is an official appointment resolution that town council passed, so we just want to make sure we cross-reference that to make sure that this still lines up with that, with that town appointment policy from a couple of years ago.
Okay, all right, check cross-reference. Okay, appointment policy, okay. All right, I think we're through with this. Thank you, we have the zoning amendment. RJ, are you still? Yeah, RJ.
I'm here.
Yeah.
I know it's late, but I'm excited about this one, so I'm bringing the energy.
I know, I know. Go.
So, did, did anyone have any questions about the staff report that was in your packet? Or do you want me to just kind of give you the 10,000 foot view here? Liked it. Good, thanks.
Does anyone have any questions?
I, I think it's a great idea from what I've seen. Both that planning and zoning, this makes a lot of sense for so many of our residents that were built prior to 1965, probably.
Yeah, yeah, right about there. And just for sort of the, the good of the video recording, once this goes online, essentially what we're discussing is if you have an existing building line that is out of compliance with current setbacks, maybe you've got a two-story house that's 10 feet away from your property line instead of 15 feet. As of right now, to do, let's say, a back, you know, backyard patio or something like that, a deck that, that would be in line with your house, technically it might be five feet over the setback line, even though it wouldn't be sticking out any further than your house already is. So it's actually very common in zoning ordinances to allow, especially for residential structures, to just as long as you're not doing anything more intense than what you're already non-conforming, to just allow you to sort of run up to that line that's existing. Our code does not let you do that. It, it says that anything that you do, whether it's residential, commercial, whatever, it doesn't matter when your house was built, you gotta comply with the current code. And so this generates a lot of zoning variances that pretty much always get granted because everyone agrees that's a, you know, a reasonable way to use your property if you're not increasing the way that it's out of conformity just because it's sort of a legacy property. So that's, I know you all know this, but, you know, for, for the viewers at home, I figured I'd give a quick recap. So if this sounds, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, if everyone's amenable to this, then we'll charge our solicitor with, and you and RJ to write up a, to write up this ordinance and then we'll work from there. So this, this would be deciding, yes, we want to move forward with having this ordinance written to possibly adopt, correct?
Yes, so the, the language under the proposed changes heading, that's pretty much what Gavin and I have already drafted up as a suggestion to move forward with. So if everyone's already comfortable with it, because it is pretty short, you know, great. If, if we pick between option one, which is residential and commercial structures can follow this versus option two, residential structures can follow, you know, rebuilding, but anything that's new for a commercial structure, rebuilt, you know, say it was destroyed in a fire or something, that follows different rules than residential structures. Those are sort of the two, it's sort of a policy decision for council. If the group is ready to decide on that tonight, we could even move forward to just plugging this into an official ordinance draft and kicking it straight down to the planning commission, you know, to keep it moving pretty quickly. But if the group wants to come back and discuss that at another meeting, you know, we can, we can pull anything that you'd need for that.
Vote for option two.
I'm for option one.
I think we, I think we need to, I think we need to read this a little bit more and come back to it, I have to tell you.
Sure.
I, I mean, this is, this, I'm not the one deciding this, we're deciding this. But to me, I think it needs a lot more discussion for us to decide what to do. And we have an executive session, I think this was an introduction to this and that we can put this on, if it, we're saying, yes, we want to go forward with this. And that's what I think we need to do tonight. And then we can put this on and then we can have a discussion and decide which one of those options we like and why. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, all right, that's, I got good nods there, okay, all right, let's.
That sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, they like it, they like it, RJ, so, so we'll just.
Hey, that was easy.
Put this on, yeah, yeah, but we need, we need a little time. This is, this is gonna, this is a little bit bigger deal about this. There's gonna be a lot of people, I think, complain about this. So I think we need to take it a little bit slow on that. So we'll put this on the agenda, okay, for non-conforming structures. Okay, okay, is there any other new business? Okay, all right, then, council is, after I get a motion to adjourn, and we adjourn, council is going to go into executive session to discuss potential, I think we said, potential litigation and possible and real estate. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Everybody, unanimous motion to adjourn.
All right, I am gonna pause the recording.
Okay, all right, we're gonna, we'll take, we'll take Shelley and Angela, okay? All right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
And we have five.